We're gonna move to J two and then J three, and then we'll go back to the public hearing. So J two and J three, we're actually gonna be taking together. And these two items are ordinances to add to our Nevada municipal code, and they're section seven dash eleven and seven dash twelve. And these are additions to our chapter seven of the Nevada municipal code. One is protection of critical infrastructure and wildfire risk areas. And we're also amending section fourteen dash twenty of the municipal code of Nevada regarding unlawful camping. And J three is, we're adding section seven dash twelve to that chapter in seven of the Nevada municipal code regarding what happens in our stream protection zone. And also, that involves no camping within that stream protection area. So I would like to ask our city attorney, actually, I'll start with our city manager, Adam McGill, who will open up the item, and then our city attorney Jeff Walters, who will present it. So, Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. These two items, if approved by the city council, will be additional tools available to the city in its ongoing efforts to reduce homelessness in Nevada. The proposed items should not be viewed as the city and county's ongoing efforts have or are failing. And we'll continue all of our existing programs and outreach to house as many people as quickly as we can. Most of our unhoused community simply want and need a safe place to live. But it's also true, there are some who are resistant to these efforts, not wanting to play by society's norms or the rules of acceptance and support of housing. We will persist looking at every available bit of leverage to mitigate resistance to these services. The city remains an active participant and supporter of the county's Housing First policy. The city is engaged in conversations for potential Home Key 2.0 funding. We are in discussions with our Marin County cities, the county, and other initiatives that would involve transitional housing and the expansion of wraparound case managers to accelerate the availability of federal housing out. The city has long been a leader in supporting the unhoused. We are home to Homeward Bound, who we've partnered with and supported financially since their arrival in Nevada. The city leases the ground that Homeward Bound resides on and the land of their future expansion project that it will sit on as well. Both of those were leased to Homeward Bound for one dollar a year. The city has contributed seven hundred and fifty thousand in city funds to their expansion project that will improve homeless veterans' housing. And Nevada has long been a leader in the county with low-income and affordable housing opportunities. It continues to be actively involved in managing many of these units. I share all this before you consider these next two items to provide full context of who Nevada is and what Nevada has done on these issues at hand. Proposed action tonight attempts to balance the greater good and the city's obligation to equally serve and protect the overall health and safety of everyone in Nevada. So that all can enjoy the city's amenities, the city's critical infrastructures protected, so that Nevada's government can operate at its full capacity and service to all. Our city attorney Jeff Walter will now walk you through the two items, you and the public, and be available at the conclusion for your questions and comments. The police department is also with us, and we'll be making a small presentation when Jeff Walter concludes his remarks.
Thank you, city manager. I really appreciate your introductory comments. Before the council tonight are two ordinances. And I think it's important to begin our discussion with the fact that in 2015, the council adopted an anti-camping ordinance. It has been in the books, as I said, for six years, that bans camping in all public parks and property of the city of Nevada. These ordinances are focused so that we can get a better grip on some of the precise activities that we have seen evolving over the last four, three or four years. They, however, do not impose a blanket prohibition, a citywide blanket prohibition. They do, the ordinances before you tonight, do leave some areas of public property available to those who are homeless, who are protected by the case law that I will refer to later on in this discussion, and which is outlined in the staff reports that accompany these two ordinances. And I'm now referring to the very famous case entitled Martin versus Boise. We'll talk briefly about that in a little bit. What I wanted to do, however, is to begin with a summary of the things that these ordinances do. The first ordinance before you, which is adding section seven eleven and amending section fourteen twenty, prohibits individuals from camping, occupying camp facilities, using camp paraphernalia, and storing personal property, one, on critical infrastructure within fifty feet of critical infrastructure, within fifty feet of a vehicular or pedestrian entrance to or exit from critical infrastructure, on certain portions of the city's rights-of-way and in wildfire-risk areas. So the focus here really is, is not simply on removing people from certain areas because there's a sense of dissatisfaction with their conduct, but it's a concern about what their conduct produces and the risks that conduct creates, such as in the wildfire areas, which now encompass many portions of the city of Nevada. And we've just heard a lengthy report this evening from the fire district's captain about the enhanced risk of fire this year. And there are numerous reports, and have been for a number of years, of the fires that homeless encampments and homeless establishments actually precipitate and cause. It's well-known throughout the Northern California area that the proclivity of homeless individuals to cause fires is high. And also, the ordinances before you tonight amend our existing anti-camping ordinance to provide that those who are entitled, those who are homeless and are entitled to camp on our parks under the Martin versus Boise doctrine, cannot do so during the daytime. So we have imposed an anti-day camping prohibition in the ordinances that are before you tonight. You may recall that about two years ago, the comprehensive anti-camping ordinance that I mentioned had been adopted in 2015, was amended and modified to allow some limited camping where an individual is homeless and the city could not offer a bed for that person. And in those circumstances, the court in the Martin versus Boise case held that the city cannot criminalize that conduct and arrest that person for loitering or violating other municipal codes that the city may have adopted. So under those limited circumstances, we have adopted our own and amended our own anti-camping ban to allow some homeless people to live and to camp on a temporary basis when they are not offered and there are no available shelters or beds for them to stay. On the other hand, if there is a shelter or a bed for them to stay, and they're offered that, and they resist or refuse the service, then they may be criminally prosecuted and removed. But as I mentioned before, that particular section in our municipal code is being proposed tonight to be amended to allow camping, even for those who are protected in the Martin versus Boise case, only in the evening time. In addition, the ordinances prohibit, clearly prohibit fires, the building-making or allowing to be operating fires unless that's done so in specific designated spots, barbecues, pits, that the city has set aside for that purpose. And finally, the ordinances prohibit camping and a variety of other activities, which are listed in the ordinance, this is the second ordinance, in the stream bed area. The city already has a, an ordinance, it's in our zoning code, that prohibits development activities within fifty feet of either side of a bank of a stream, called a stream protection zone, and that has been in place for many, many years. We have utilized that zone largely because it's an environmental protection ordinance. We have utilized that zone and relied upon that in crafting our second ordinance that prohibits other activities too, that have sometimes the same or similar types of impacts on the environment within that stream bed. And we now are proposing to the council that a variety of activities not be permitted in a stream protection zone, which is defined, as I said before, in our zoning code. The stream protection area includes the stream, the banks, the stream bed itself, and then fifty feet, as I said, on either side of the top of the bank. And the ordinance before you tonight prohibits, for example, camping, occupying camp facilities or using camp paraphernalia in the zone, driving or otherwise operating a vehicle in the zone, using bicycles in the areas unless expressly allowed to be used in designated areas, possessing or consuming alcoholic beverages is prohibited now in the ordinance that we're proposing, that the council introduced tonight, in the stream protection zone. Posting any sign on a tree or attaching a cable or wire to any tree is also prohibited under this particular provision of the code that's before you tonight. As I said before, however, this does not create a blanket prohibition against camping, even by those who are protected under the Martin versus Boise doctrine throughout the city of Nevada. That kind of ordinance would be, in fact, in our opinion, violative of the Martin versus Boise principles. Let me chat a little bit about Martin versus Boise. The court basically found that there are certain things that humans do that are universal and unavoidable consequences of being human, such as sitting, lying, and sleeping. And the court in the Boise case felt that those sorts of activities for people who cannot find a home and who, for whom homes are not, or beds are not offered, they have those inherent natural conditions that in using or exercising them cannot be criminally prosecuted for doing so if they are doing so on public property. And that was the basic holding of the court. The court, by its own admission, said that their holding was very narrow. And in our staff report, we quoted a very important footnote, and I'll just read a portion of it briefly. "Nor do we suggest that a jurisdiction with insufficient shelter can never criminalize the act of sleeping outside, even where shelter is unavailable. An ordinance prohibiting sitting, lying, or sleeping outside at particular times or in particular locations might well be constitutionally permissible. So too might an ordinance barring the obstruction of public rights-of-way or the erection of certain structures." So the court left open the door to regulation, and that's what is happening tonight. The ordinances before you, we believe, strike a balance between those who are protected under the holding and ruling in the case of Martin versus Boise, and the need of the city to, first of all, protect its sensitive riparian corridors, as well as to allow the public to utilize the parks that have been set aside for the use of the public, and to protect critical infrastructure that might be adversely impacted by encampments or the camping nearby. So, for example, the ordinances before you tonight, the critical infrastructure ordinance, is patterned after one that was adopted by the city of Sacramento. It has identified levees as being critical infrastructure in that city because there are many of them. And they actually had a couple of, I believe, fires that were set by homeless encampments near the levees that actually threatened the levees' viability and soundness. So the adoption of that ordinance came fairly easily by that city. That ordinance delegates to the city manager the authority to propose to the council additional infrastructure that the ordinance would protect. That hasn't occurred yet. So the only critical infrastructure in that city that has been identified by the council are levees. The ordinance before you, however, gives some samples of the kind of things that might be deemed as critical infrastructure. They're actually listed in the definitional section of the ordinance. And let me give you some samples of what those might be. Critical infrastructure may include, but it's not limited to governmental buildings, such as schools, fire stations, police stations, jails, courthouses, hospitals, structures such as antennas, bridges, roads, train tracks, drainage systems, or levees, or systems such as computer networks, public utilities, electrical wires, natural gas pipes, telecommunications centers, or water sources. The ordinance also does specify that wildfire-risk areas also are off-limits to encampments by homeless persons, and also that any encampment or camping by homeless persons or anybody else must stay at least fifty feet away from youth-serving facilities, such as child daycare facilities, preschool, public or private primary or secondary schools, and city playgrounds. I offer those samples of critical infrastructure because the ordinance also delegates to the council, much like Sacramento, the authority to identify what critical infrastructures in the city you wish to be protected under this ordinance. And we will come back at the next council meeting with a resolution memorializing those that you have selected. To give you a little bit of context as to what might be appropriate in this regard, I would like, at this point, for Sergeant Allen Bates to talk a bit about the homeless situation in Nevada. And I think he's, there he is. This would be a good time for him to jump in and chat about and discuss and describe some of the conditions that the city is currently confronting.
Great. Thank you very much, Sergeant Bates, for attending the council meeting and giving us your wisdom based on all the experience you've had with this issue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Members of Council, City Manager McGill, Mr. Walter, Chief McCaffrey. Before I begin, I'd like to just say a quick thank you to our partners on our team here at the Nevada Response Team, including Community Action Marin, Pivot Downtown Streets Team, Health and Human Services, North Marin Community Services, Resource Conservation District, Marin Flood Odyssey, and Homeward Bound. These folks work tirelessly to work on our homeless situation, and we're doing the best we can with the resources that we have and the abilities that we have. I'd like to remind council that the Boise decision has obviously proven a significant challenge to local government, but it hasn't extinguished our ability to fairly provide services, individualized, while also respecting surrounding businesses and residents. When an unhoused person is in need of individualized services and resources, the group I just mentioned works tirelessly and is eager to help those people that request services. But when an unhoused person is service-resistant or unwilling to accept services, our ability to help is extremely limited. And in a lot of ways, it's extremely limited because of current case law and the way our municipal code is set up. Those who choose to live unhoused should not be able to stake public property on a permanent basis. And believe it or not, there's a significant segment of the unhoused population who agree that sleeping in a...
Sergeant Bates, you're frozen.
...appropriate during evening. It may also be appropriate for them to lead during, of an unhoused group who approximately six months ago posted a very poignant statement when it said, "Did you know the only reason we're camped here is because of the shelter in place? Otherwise, we'd be sleeping at the park at night and packing up a bedroll every morning and leaving." I mean, that's very important to show that somebody who's involved, especially as a leader in the unhoused movement, understands how to respect public property and respect other people in this community. It's also important to understand that the effects of homelessness are not relegated just to those in need, the surrounding businesses and other members of our community. We have to understand too that the environment is hurting as well. Since the beginning of 2020, the Nevada Response Team and Nevada Police Department has issued eight charges for unlawful or dangerous fires in and around homeless encampments set by unhoused individuals. We've issued a number of citations for littering, littering near waterways, and public urination and defecation. With the help of Nevada Public Works, we've removed more than twenty-two thousand pounds of debris from encampments alone at a cost of over thirty thousand dollars. We've worked closely with the Resource Conservation District of Marin County to establish habitat restoration areas. And to briefly quote Resource Conservation District, "Encampments have further increased negative impacts to the creek, including but not limited to clearing of vegetation for tent placements, leaving behind waste that imposes impacts to water quality, which violates the Clean Water Act of nineteen seventy-two, and that also discharges pollutants into the water. It imposes flood hazard risk with debris washout that could block downstream culverts, damaging infrastructure." It's also important to understand that several waterways that we have in town include animals that are listed under the Endangered Species Act of nineteen seventy-three. As it pertains to staff time, the Nevada Police Department, since the beginning of 2020, has responded to more than six hundred and eighty calls regarding unhoused individuals. More than half of those six hundred and eighty calls have been at a single encampment in the city of Nevada. That has, that doesn't even include Nevada Public Works staff time, nonprofit organizations, and other outreach folks that we work closely with on a daily basis. There's no doubt that public perception about unhoused individuals is a contentious issue. And there's also no doubt that this isn't relegated only to the city of Nevada. It is important to understand too that the public's perception about encampments is they feel unsafe. And as a police department, that's one of our most, that's our greatest concern, is making people feel safe. There's no doubt that our encampments in town have experienced violent crime. There's no doubt they experienced drugs. And there's no doubt that there are registered sex offenders. The public has a right to feel concerned. I think the two ordinances, the two ordinances that are here, presented to you today, have a very common sense and reasonable approach as it pertains to our homelessness, along with the Boise decision. Since January of twenty twenty-one, just a few months ago, the Nevada Response Team has made thirty-one arrests or requested charges be filed, misdemeanor or above, the Marin County District Attorney's Office. We've made thirty-seven referrals to homeless shelter, and we've documented more than twenty-one refusals to homeless shelter. So as I said before, I think it's important to understand when somebody chooses to be unhoused, they shouldn't be able to stake a certain amount of property, a certain amount of public property. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you very much for the time. I'll be available for comment, and thank you again.
Thank you very much. Back to you, Jeff Walters.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. Sergeant, may I ask a question? Do you know what percentage of the homeless persons, at least at Lee-Gurner Park, have been vaccinated?
The information we receive, although unofficial, just simply based on statements we've obtained, is approximately twenty percent.
And have, has there been an effort through mobile vaccination units to vaccinate everybody at the park that was there at the time?
The opportunity to be vaccinated has made itself, has been present at least twice.
I'd like to address a couple more points about the ordinances. They do provide a mechanism for cleaning up encampments and other living situations that are in violation of its prohibitions. These encampments and these living situations can be abated upon twenty-four hours' notice. And if there's an emergency situation, they can be abated immediately. Please note, however, that the normal course of introducing and adopting an ordinance and then waiting for thirty days for it to become effective will put the earliest effective date of this ordinance off until around January, I'm sorry, July ninth. If, for example, the council introduces the ordinances tonight and then adopts them at the next council meeting, approximately July ninth would be the first time that they could be enforced. However, there is a clause that might delay that enforcement. And the clause is there primarily because of the Sausalito case, which you may be familiar with. Sausalito adopted an ordinance that did two things. It banned day camping at its parks, and also it produced a situation where the council did want to move all the homeless people out of one park and move them to another, to that designated spot that we've heard some of the public members tonight speak of. The city was sued, and the federal judge issued a ruling prohibiting both of the efforts of the Sausalito City Council in this regard. Primarily, the court relied upon a doctrine called "state-created danger", meaning that, under the Constitution, the government itself cannot adopt laws or enforce policies that exacerbate an existing dangerous situation or create a new dangerous situation for the persons affected. And the court relied heavily on the CDC guidelines that basically stated that during the COVID, homeless persons should remain in place. Because if you move them about, that has the possibility of spreading the COVID virus. And the court spent much of its decision focusing on that particular theory. In fact, I don't believe the court even relied upon the Eighth Amendment, which was, as you know, the primary doctrinal linchpin that was utilized by the Martin versus Boise judge. So we have included in the ordinances that are before you tonight an enforcement mechanism that might delay its enforcement depending on two things. The first to occur, if the CDC modifies its guidelines to allow the movement of homeless individuals, or if the county moves into the yellow tier and at least ninety percent of the adult population has been vaccinated. If, whenever one of those two things happens, then the city can enforce this ordinance. Again, respecting the concern that if we're moving these people out of an area, the fifty-foot buffer zone that the ordinance has created, to some other area, again, you're causing them to decamp, close the tents down, pack up, and move about. That would be something that we would not want to have happen as long as there is a COVID-spreader possibility remains significant. And we have crafted this ordinance to allow enforcement when the COVID-spreading potentiality of this kind of movement is low. So that, as I said before, is a caveat to when this ordinance would be enforceable. I think that summarizes the comments I wanted to make. Are there any questions that I or other persons on the team can answer?
Great. Mr. McGill, did you want to say a few words first?
I think, Mr. Walter, would this be appropriate time probably to just, you mentioned some COVID. I mentioned some of this earlier, but for those that weren't with us in our opening remarks, I think now would be a good time to talk a little bit about where we are with COVID in respect to what you just talked about, forcibility. So you understood the city attorney to say that the earliest we can enforce this, even regardless of COVID, is about July ninth because of the nature, the way ordinances progress in the city. So it'll be a second reading at the next meeting on July eighth, and then we have to wait thirty days before it's effective. So even regardless of COVID, we're at July ninth on forcibility. And then it is dependent upon the factors that the city attorney outlined, July ninth or after. But we want to just document for today where we stand in COVID and things are going very well. As I noted earlier, we expect and hope to be in yellow tier July, or June first. Of course, we all know June fifteenth. Most of the restrictive guidelines around social distancing, occupancy, and all of the other types of restrictions, at least as of now, appear to be going away by state.
at least as of now, appear to be going away by state. In the county of Marin, Dr. Willis has indicated up to this point that he has, he intends to follow the state's guidelines and not be more conservative or restrictive in Marin County. So we'll be shifting to a more risk reduction approach to COVID. We also will continue our mobile vaccine efforts throughout the city at our encampments to try to encourage and incentivize people to take the vaccine to increase that number from what you heard Sergeant Bates mention. Additionally, we are at eighty-five point nine percent of eligible Marin residents that receive at least one dose. So assuming they get their second dose, complete the two-week follow-on period, we are on track to achieve one of the criteria listed in the ordinance, about the ninety percent vaccine rate. So this now includes our, actually, the ordinance speaks to sixteen and above, but since the ordinance was crafted eligible people for the vaccine are now twelve and above, which nearly sixty percent of twelve to fifteen-year-olds in Marin have also been vaccinated. So the COVID information is promising, and it's just good news regardless of this item, and is suggestive that we'll be able, despite some of the things in the Sausalito matter that you've been briefed on her tonight, our circumstance and timing will be different than we expect. But of course, that's all tentative and subject to change, but the best information we have now appears likely July ninth or very soon thereafter, the ordinance would be enforceable.